We'll go ahead and get started. Please stand for prayer, pledge of allegiance. I'll pray tonight. Please fire your heads if you so desire. Gracious heavenly Father, we've come to you now. I'm going to give you thanks for this community. We ask you to guide this council and the people here tonight and just be with them. We thank you for our residents, our support service staff here in our community. We ask you to guide them and direct them each and every day and keep them safe. We thank you for all that you do and all you are. We ask you to be with those who are sick today and just need you in their hearts and then and healing them as soon as possible. We thank you for all that you do and all you are. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a special guest tonight. That is April. She is filling in for Cheryl. Cheryl had eye surgery today, so keep rolling your prayers. I had not talked to her, but she's doing well. So April, would you like to do roll call?
Bailey?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
Beverly?
Here.
Aigle?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Thank you. And April said to talk slowly, precisely. You might have to call for a ten minute, ten minutes for council. Thank you, April. Tonight we have our first on the agenda. We have Greg Smidley with the Hicksville Bank along with some other people.
Yeah.
So Greg?
Okay. Well, it is an exciting goal to give a handout. Okay. All right. Let's see. That way I won't insult your intelligence by reading verbatim, but we will. We will try and kind of hit the highlights. Sorry. I'm not very good going through these.
Thank you, sir.
I think I have a... Let me give you my two, Doug.
Do you end up on torts still?
Uh?
Do you end up on torts still?
Yeah. Maybe not. Ah, there it is. So I have to count. I can count. A banker needs to count.
Touch fingers.
All right. So I'm Greg Smidley, president of Hicksville Bank. We also have with us Mindy Boebe, our chief financial officer, executive vice president, and Tina Fogor, vice president of director of accounting and information technology and security. It's a mouthful. But there's been some recent activity in town that prompted us to think it might be worth a conversation. We know that there's been a local bank branch, a local bank that's announced a merger with an out-of-state bank, and sometimes that makes a difference on banking services being provided to the local branch banks. And I understand if my information is correct that the council's still contemplating options for financing the swimming pool. So with those two things in mind, we thought we would just, again, highlight a few things that we think we would appreciate your consideration for. I'll just hit the highlights. Again, Hicksville Bank is a reminder, it's the only locally headquartered bank in town. And what does that mean? Is that important? We think it's important because as a headquartered institution, we contribute vitality to the community in many ways. One way is payroll. We employ 23, approximately 23 full-time employees here in the Hicksville office with the approximate payroll of 1.4 million. Multiply that times the village tax rate, and we're contributing a decent amount of money to the village coffers. Our other banks in town, not near as big, typically average four, maybe five individuals. We know based upon what we pay our people and the staff that they have, you're probably in the 250 range at most for payroll. So again, we think we bring a lot to the table with respect to payroll and corresponding income taxes. And just to mention that with 23 local employees, we think we are one of the larger, not the largest certainly, but one of the larger employers in town. We provide property tax revenue and support of local merchants and vibrancy to downtown. With our large footprint, building footprint in the middle of town, certainly we are paying property tax, again, to the village. But perhaps even more so is the vibrancy that we bring with customers coming to our place of business, then they can also shop with other local merchants. Plus what we spend, we buy from the local printer. We, our employees, get oil changes and gas at the local, oil change and gas establishments. We get our prescriptions filled at the local pharmacy. We mail our mailers through the local post office. Now, I have experienced this before. When post office, when the post office looks to reorganize or consolidate, they look at outgoing mail. And so it's nice to have a bank in town that mails a lot of information because that contributes to the volume in that location, and that sometimes means the difference between whether that location closes or not. So there's a lot of things that we bring, I think, as a local institution, just due to our size. The, we do, one of the advantages that we have, we think, as a vibrant local institution is we, we're proud supporter of our community. We think it's important for the economic development of our, of our community, and we put our money where our mouth is. Last year in 2023, we donated over $75,000 in contribution, financial contributions, of which 11,000 of that went specifically to Hicksville charities, plus an additional 25,000 to the splash pad. In addition to our financial contributions, we think we provide a lot of leadership to local organizations, representative organizations, including the Huber Opera House, Hicksville Rotary, Hicksville School Foundation, Chamber of Commerce, Christmas Cruise Through, and a lot more. So again, we were able to do that because we employ a large number, relatively large number of people locally. In addition to our staff, of course, our board of directors are very community-minded. In particular, Jim Schmidt and Denny Vetter have been leaders in this community for some time, both financially and otherwise, and other leadership opportunities. So we're all in on Hicksville. And then the other thing we provide is for economic development and the well-being of our community is loans to local community members and businesses. I just, we just did a report, 2023, just in the Hicksville zip code. We financed over $5 million. So those are to businesses, those are to individuals, those are to homeowners. That money that we finance stays in the community, but the challenge with that is, in order to loan money out, our raw materials are deposit dollars. So it works as a cycle. We get local deposits, we try and turn around and make local loans. One thing that we wanted to put some numbers to it as well, I was able to see some bank statements in 2023, just three months worth, but it gives us some comparison. If we look at September and October, November of 2023, just by way of comparison, at the, where you have your primary account having to be a premier, the interest earned on your $400,000 peg balance was zero, and then took the average of the three months, the bank statements that I had, you had a service charge each month that varied a little bit based upon activity, but the average was $198.03. That same money would have been at Hicksville Bank, you'd earn interest on your $400,000, and you wouldn't have had a service charge. So the annual difference comparing the two would have been about $12,000. That's notable in my mind. So it's just a consideration as you think about banking opportunities, $12,000 can pay for, for some wages or any, you know, number of expenses that might be helpful versus not having the $12,000. Now, again, that can vary a little bit as interest rates change, that dollar amount changes. But the point is, there are opportunities to make a difference. Now, one of the important considerations in a banking relationship, I understand, is a municipality, is the safety of funds and meeting the statutory requirements for, for safety of those funds and for pledged securities. Now, the state of Ohio allows two methods for securitizing your deposit dollars. The Ohio pooled collateral system, the OPCF, and an individual, an individually pledged account. Now, we bank, and this is where Tina and Mindy can jump in, they do it directly, they work with municipalities directly, but we have a number of municipalities that already bank with us. One, one village about the size of Hicksville has a seven, roughly $7 million balance, so we do quite a bit of this. But they're all, they're not through the Ohio pooled collateral system, they're through individual pledged securities, and we have to pledge 105% balance with government treasury securities. We do that through the trustee, through the Federal Home Loan Bank is our trustee, Federal Home Loan Bank of Cincinnati. And so we do have resources to meet the statutory requirements for your, for the safety of your funds. We have not, at this point, done the Ohio pooled collateral system because there isn't expense to it. And we have over $50 million in securities to pledge, and so if we do that, there's, there's really no expense to us, and it meets the statutory requirements. We do the Ohio pooled collateral system, we pay the state of Ohio, plus we pay the trustee fee to handle that force. So there is an expense involved, and we're looking at that, but it's not, it's not inexpensive, and it's not without a significant amount of red tape. And lastly, I will mention then the commitment to the splash pad and the community. As I mentioned earlier, we, we try to put our money where our mouth is, we donated some money, we're happy to do that, we think it's an important community asset. But as you contemplate swimming pool financing, we do hope and trust that you would keep us in mind to permit us to do a bid. Once again, we did one last year, but it expired. And we've even committed in writing that we'll meet, meet or beat any comparable bid that you have so long as we have your primary deposit accounts and so long as the loan is less than $2 million. So again, I think we seldom do that, but we're so committed to the, not only the swimming pool, but the vitality of the, of the community that we're willing to take that step out on that, on that ledge a little bit, knowing that, again, as long as we're comparing apples to apples, because we really don't shrink from, from competition, because the money is all the same, it's all green, but it's just how we, how you price it. And so we think we can be as competitive as possible. Ladies, what did I miss?
I think you hit the highlights. I guess questions that you guys have either directly or feel comfortable, we can, we can share email addresses if you'd be more comfortable to email directly and ask those questions as well.
In particular, they're here in case you wanted to add any technical questions about the...
The back end.
The back end side, the collateralization of the securities, because that's not something I work with on a daily basis, but they do.
Does anybody have any questions for Greg or Tina?
Well, again, I know you can read, so when you get a chance, take a look at the details, but I wanted to give us the highlights of how we want to participate with the community. So again, we would just appreciate your use of consideration, banking relationship and both in the credit side as well.
And I know you guys are a strong member in the community, you support the community, and I encourage all businesses to support within. I mean, Hicksville's, to buy local is a, is a plus, and it helps that regenerate that dollar locally, I get that. And we had talked a little bit within the inner-office stuff, and when it comes time to take a look at our banking situation, the packages and everything else, we definitely keep you in mind.
Well, we appreciate it. Again, for us to do our, to do our best, it does take raw materials, not raw materials with deposit dollars, and then we want to turn around and loan those back out, and that's what we think we do pretty well. So thank you for your consideration.
But I think you, what the bank does for the community, I know you're very supportive of different sponsorships and activities in the community.
Well, that's the thing. And I've seen firsthand, you probably have too, when the local bank, the bank, or banks, local banks, and the school system are the heartbeat of community. When those go away, many times the community dries up, because we get relied on quite a bit for financial and staff support, if you will, for contribution of dollars and hours and time, leadership, if you will. And frankly, if we cease to be a headquartered institution, we'll see a half a dozen people working out of that institution instead of two dozen. You know, you'll have a few toddlers and a few loan officers, and everything else gets consolidated to wherever the headquarters is. So we just know that that's how it works, and you'll have to make whatever decision you think is best for the community, I understand that, but we just appreciate your consideration.
Absolutely. Thank you, Greg. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
And I think we are summarily excused.
It's up to you if you want to stick around. Your choice.
What would I turn?
All right. Next on our agenda is the approval of the August 19 council minutes.
It's a, it's a very minute little thing, but...
So this is your report?
Rob Beverly. Rob wasn't here that day, but I was.
Nobody says Rob Beverly. Rob. Maybe we're high.
And that's it.
Motion to approve?
Yeah.
Second.
Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bassett?
Upstate.
Beverly?
Yes.
Aigle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, you have a payment list, approval of bills in your packet, any questions concerned?
I have a question about the painting, but I don't know that we'll get an answer tonight. It seemed like a high price to paint a pavilion, paint two bathrooms.
Was there warranty of it? Is that what I know? I thought there was, because I thought, didn't he repair the walls since they were basically rotting away?
Several things submitted, so I didn't know if it was all under one. That's kind of why I wanted to ask, but see, if that's what the going rate is, I would like to put my name in for the next paint job.
That's all the things there is, the restrooms and kitchen, correct? Yeah.
And Cory didn't say, since he wasn't at the meeting, if anybody had to address any of the bills.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
Yeah, he emailed them.
That email came out this afternoon or something.
Earlier today.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Well, maybe we can check on that.
I thought there was more to it than that from hearing conversations, but I don't know to what extent, so.
And I've always heard of it, Ron was reasonable in his work, so I would certainly think that it's more than just two rooms, would be my guess.
I make motion to pay bills.
Second.
Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Aigle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Boards and commissions, nuisance board met September 10th. Anybody want to expand on that?
Going to.
Oh, going to me, I'm sorry. Didn't we have September 10th? Council committee reports, police fire committee, and also personnel committee met.
Police fire is going to meet September 10th.
Oh, I guess you did it again.
We struggled, didn't I?
Wow.
Same day.
Oh, we got two meetings that day, right? I'm sorry. Usually it's not in there.
Oh, yes.
You know.
It threw me off.
Personnel committee met August 26th.
I have a thing on personnel, and I'm not complaining or anything, but it said that they're talking, in the last paragraph, they're talking about the people that can drive to a scene and, let's see, somebody, maybe it was you, Eric?
Yeah, it was me.
Concerned about what their liability for emergency responders injured in an accident or something on the way to the scene. They drive at high rate speed to every time that whistle blows.
What my question was, I had somebody from the community ask me if a first responder could show directly up to the scene, not come into the fire hall or, you know, get down to EMS, but drive directly to the scene in their own personal vehicle.
With their lights on.
With their lights on. And if that was a lot of them, I told him I'd have an answer for him, I'd find out. So when we were at the last meeting, which was this one, I'd asked, and Cory said he was going to check with our insurance person, and I think Chief Denny responded about, or maybe it was Cory, one of the two responded about the, this was after this, because I ran out of minutes, but they talked about the chief or assistant chief could, or they could give approval to go directly to the scene, but they had to follow policy book of some sort, and that policy book we don't have in place. So if it's not in place, they shouldn't be driving directly to the scene in their own personal vehicle. Somebody from the community was just worried about liability, you know, if they're coming to the fire hall, that's one thing, but if they're showing up on scene in their own personal vehicle, they're in an accident, they were concerned that we could be liable. That was the question that they asked.
And I understand that part, and I'm with you 100%, but, you know, like, before Bobby moved, he would come past my house every time. And, and I would just assume if I was having a heart attack, Bob stopped at the house instead of coming up here, switching vehicles and going back to my house. And, and we've always, we've always had people, different ones, that responded in their own vehicles through the years.
I told the person that asked me, I said, I had a neighbor down the road that they seemed like they showed up every two, three weeks at his house, and Bob would only show up to lift assistance to get on the cot, so I knew he drove his own personal vehicle there a lot. I said, I don't know if that's legal or not, I said, I'd have to ask.
I just wanted to bring that out.
So under highway vice code, they are allowed to run lights and sire if the public, it's considered the emergency vehicle.
To the scene.
Doesn't say whether it's to the scene or not. They're allowed to operate it as the emergency vehicle.
Oh, yeah, right, right, right.
So, so it would take care, cover that, even if they were going to the scene. And I can know whoever it was to Eric was probably, they were probably complaining about the incident down at North Main Street, where the fire department, we had the request for mutual aid for lift assist, because of the steep stairwell, and a heavier person to lift down those steps. So everybody, you know, when you call for lift assist, they're all coming directly to the scene.
First wasn't mad, they just asked if it was liable.
So, but I mean, under highway vice code, it doesn't, it says they're allowed to operate as the emergency vehicle, does that say have to be to the scene?
Well, the only reason that I'm bringing it up, chief, is, is I'm in favor, like I just explained with the, my, my deal, so I just wanted to get it out in the open and so that if there was a question or anything, that we could, we could answer it tonight. But I'm in favor of not everybody driving there. I mean, somebody's going to have to stop here and pick a truck up.
But what Cory found out from Conrad was, there has to be a policy in place, right, which the fire department has Lexible, okay? So I'm assuming Lexible probably has a policy that is written to that standard for volunteer fire.
But it'd be interesting to see that, because the only thing that leads me to think is that somehow you would have to get permission from that chief or that chief or, you know, so that's kind of slowing the whole thing down.
Yeah, so, well, that's why I say you establish that if you, if it says we have to have a written policy, obviously they got to create one.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
If there isn't one already made at the Lexible, but I can't imagine a Lexible would not have one. I'm sorry, because that's a bunch of attorneys that make that, and it's all two Ohio standards. So...
Okay. I was just curious. Just wanted to bring it out into the light. And thank you. Thank you, everybody.
The other things we talked about, we had the personnel manual that we went over, and council, majority of council members approved it. There's been a lot of questions and additions, corrections that want to be done to it or were suggested, and nothing got done with it. And so we met with Chief Denny and went over kind of page by page with some, a lot of items. Some of them deal with police and fire only, some deal with all of the departments. Cory also agreed on that. But some of the items, we're waiting on a response from Rachel, because some of them, Mark would like to put in there, but don't know if you can or you should, so we're waiting on responses before we, we meet again. So that's pretty much what our meeting was about.
Do you guys want me to send, like, the, I spoke with Chief Denny earlier today about kind of the research I've been doing on it. Do you guys want me to send you, like, an email?
Yeah, like, each one, like, I recommend this, or I don't recommend that, and that, or, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's fine. I've been doing research the last couple of years, so I can put that.
Okay. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that personnel policy probably hadn't been looked at since, I think, by the council.
Well, I think somebody said, I was a little...
I think they had put it together. Things change over time.
It's 2011 on the book. It's got several different dates.
It's a good time to bring it up and make the changes. It's well overdue.
And some laws in Ohio change too, so there's some things that Chief wanted to kind of just have, where it wasn't so vague, and he wanted to clear it up.
But thank you for working on that and getting the updates on it, so. You have questions for Personnel Committee? All right, moving forward, Cory was not able to be here tonight, but he did send a project list email. Got a lot going on. Like I said, if you want to reach out to Cory and ask him about any concerns or questions, so feel free to do that.
I have several, several questions that I will have to get with you. I have no idea, will he be back tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good.
Did you want to talk about...
That's one I was going to say, since he sent an email.
Oh, it was his email, otherwise I didn't care.
So he sent an email today, talking about, you want to read, he had it already printed.
Yeah.
Well, we, well, basically, we received the paperwork from the state with the guidelines on the $750,000 grant. Like, that's thick, right? We have till December of 2026 to get it completed if we're moving forward with the pool construction. We're going to have to do a rebid, basically, and Cory wants to know before he signs it down the line, is that the direction we're going with the pool, because that's a gift from the state. I mean, he doesn't want to turn it down, but he wants to make sure that everybody's on board with moving forward with rebidding and with control of the construction.
Does the pool have to be, like, totally completed by that?
My understanding was, yeah, so it doesn't give it a lot of time. He was open for, like, a two-year window, but...
Well, it's shy.
Yeah, so, no.
I would, I would see why we couldn't complete a pool by now, the 26th. And hopefully they're, I don't know, they're changing the shape.
Right. I'm in favor of having a rebid.
Yeah.
Get updated numbers, especially since the block was changed to reduce the cost, and a lot of the infrastructure is already put in for the splash pad, which should bring the cost down. And last time Cory had checked with, it might be the company that's actually doing the work out there right now, building or material prices have come down since we bid out the splash pad. And last time, the pool was supposed to be 3.4, 4.5 or something like that, and we, we set aside 1.5 million, and that's three quarters of a million, so that's 2.25 million. So it'd be nice to see if we have to get a, let's say, a one, 1.25 million dollar loan and see what the interest rates are. I know Cheryl had checked last year, and I know Greg had just got done saying that, you know, that they're interested in meeting or meeting any loan up to 2 million. The longs were, switched all of our accounts over to them, so it'd be nice to kind of see what our monthly payment would be after getting a budgetary number from a bid.
I, when you say that, one of the things go up, I mean, Cory just wants to know if he needs to spend the time filling out, because once you send it in, then you are committed. With that price tag comes in at four, you're stuck with that.
Then they start making cuts.
When does he have, when does he have the paperwork to submit?
I think, didn't he say on there, you want to...
No, no. Yeah, as soon as possible.
Discuss it this evening, but, yeah.
He wanted us to discuss it and kind of give some direction for it, so.
I'd be curious on when the deadline is for him to submit it, how long he thinks it'll take him to fill out, I'll just admit it too, it's not something probably going to take him five minutes to fill out and be done with it.
Who, who did the engineering on the, was it six months into the pool? Is that what we're going to continue with?
Well, it'd be nice, it'd be nice, yeah, we already paid them for all their design and all their...
Who?
The rebidding should be fairly cheap.
Are you going to keep that original pool with all the fingers?
Yeah, I would.
Oh, man.
I know. I know.
It would cost us more money.
You will, you will never convince me of that, never. I've built way too many things. You can't form up something like this for a concrete pour cheaper than you can form this up.
Well, it's not the, it's not that. It's not the one-time fee upfront, a pour in it. Yeah, you're right, it's gonna be more expensive, but the, the cost to operate it every year is gonna way offset that.
Can't believe that either.
It's because the volume's a lot less.
The amount of water, the amount of chemical and the amount of electrical you should use for your pump circulation, because it's a lot shallower water. We, we had all those meetings with Standard Aquatics before Sixmo, and both companies that are aquatics companies, they both completely agree with one another that, and Astro Pool guy, I can't remember his name, he's passed away, but he said the same thing. He said, I understand everyone like the old rectangular ones, simple. He said, but these are so much more economical to run.
Can't see it, but I'm not, I've built a few pools, but. Well, we won't get stuck there. I think, I think that Corey should go ahead. That's my opinion.
Rebid it.
Rebid it and get this into the, to the state so we don't lose that, what is it, 750?
My understanding was he was already working with Sixmo to rebid, but they had a personnel change.
Yeah, Chris Blue is no longer there.
He's no longer there, he's the one that did like a lot of the work, so.
It'd be interesting to see how many more people bid on it this time around. I know we had two bids the first time and then we did the rebid and only had one of the companies decide to submit. Be nice to get a, a range of people interested in the project.
It would be nice to end that bid, that hill cut off. You've got that hill, of course it looks even worse with the pile of dirt there, then the pad just got put in, it's down here, three foot lower than the rest of it. Just top of that hill needs taken off. Level things up and.
So what, do we need a motion to have a rebid set up? I mean.
I thought we, a week ago, I thought we told them to rebid.
He just, with, with this grant money, he wanted to make sure everybody was on board with rebidding, so.
Do you want a straw bid or?
We can make it official, I guess we're allowing him to set up with Sixmo rebidding the construction side of the project, so.
I'll make that motion. I would like to find out what the deadline is for the.
Definitely.
We can deal with that tomorrow.
Definitely. Hopefully, hopefully Corey can send it out to all of us, email.
Because that might change the way we vote on, hey, we want you to file that application now, because by the time the bid goes out and we receive them, it might pass the deadline of.
So you want the grant deadline soon to take place, okay. Roll call.
Haley?
No.
Assett?
Yes.
Nobody paying for it. Nobody's told me how we're paying for it.
We got $700,000 grant.
Okay, but we're a little short.
I'm going to buy it.
Finance is sure, how you put that?
Who's next?
So this is, hang on just a second. This is not the finance that we'll put in, this is just for Corey to go ahead and check it out.
I'm gonna put it in the paper, get a bid.
Okay, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm all for it.
Aigle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did, yeah. It didn't sound like you said Miller, I'm sorry.
Okay. Go to Corey tomorrow on that. Anything else for administrators, stuff, get to the bill, solicitors' reports?
Second reading of ordinance 2024-15 by caption only for his being recreational adult use marijuana.
Question?
Yeah?
If we vote this down on the third reading, does that make it legal?
Um, I mean, I wouldn't say legal. It would just, it would allow companies to come in.
Allow somebody to, that wanted to have a store in this town, they could do it.
Right, as long as they go through the appropriate channels, obviously, get everything approved. But yeah, if you don't have something specifically prohibiting it, then people could come into.
So this ordinance is to allow it?
This ordinance is to prohibit.
Prohibit it completely.
Sale of it in the village.
So if, if this is prohibiting it, how do we get around this?
Because if, if either you don't vote or nobody makes a motion and then nobody votes on it, then it would continue, it would just pass. Because that's Ohio law back in November.
And that, I'm sorry, that caption is misleading that I just read too. It said prohibiting recreational adult use marijuana in the village. It should be the sale of it in the village. You can't, you can't, you can't prohibit the use of it.
The sale of it.
The sale of it, yes.
You're just giving me all script.
So, so if you make a motion on this and I second it and the majority of council vote yes, that means there, that will not allow a shop to go in Hicksville. If we don't vote on it and nobody makes a, let's say, makes the motion a second and the majority don't vote yes to prohibit it, then a shop can open. If we don't make a motion or nobody seconds the motion, it'll still slide through and you would not prohibit any store from opening.
Okay.
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud.
He said, right, the only way that you can prevent, uh, business selling cannabis in the village of Hicksville is to have an ordinance on the book saying no. You could also pass an ordinance that doesn't prohibit it, but limits it to a certain number.
So, so no if you, if you want it and yes if you don't want it.
If you vote yes, then that's, that means you're prohibiting it, so it won't be a store.
Moving right along.
So that's just a second, we'll get that one more next time.
But you're gonna change the heading for the next time around.
Yeah, yeah, that, I don't know, I don't think that's, let me double check, but I don't think that is the, um, actual caption I used on it.
The ordinance says.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to be sure, yeah, okay. Um, so then we have first reading of ordinance 2024-19 by caption only to amend appropriations and declare.
Where's that money coming from?
It was all debated money. It wasn't anything from us or anything, so.
Okay.
Make motion to approve.
Spend, suspend.
Second. Roll call.
Haley?
Yeah.
Assett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Aigle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, so second and final reading of ordinance 2024-19 by caption only to amend appropriations and declare.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Haley?
Yes.
Assett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Aigle?
Yes. Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yeah, first reading of ordinance 2024-20 by caption only accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring.
Both two, suspend the rules. I'll second.
Roll call.
Haley?
Yes.
Assett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Aigle?
Yes. Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2024-20 by caption only accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring.
Someone?
Second. Roll call.
Haley?
Yes.
Assett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Aigle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
We have second reading of resolution 2024-13 by caption only for recovery of monies expended for imminent illegal.
That is only the second reading, so, very good, thank you.
Yeah, sure, I can. Um, so Kent had emailed me the other day, a chain of emails regarding, if I, if I am reading it correctly, the thought is to take over the costs and responsibility for repairing sidewalks. Is that what? You kind of wanted to explore and the liability to the village if we were to do that? So I mean, to, to a pretty great extent, the, the village has political immunity. Even if someone were to get hurt or injured on a sidewalk, there's a three-tiered analysis that you do when someone tries to sue the village for any accidents or anything like that that happens on property, including sidewalks. So I mean, it really depends on the situation, but there is pretty much a blanket immunity for villages if something were to happen. Obviously negligence is looked at, you know, if there's some hole, gaping hole in the sidewalk that, you know, takes us three years to fix and someone falls and breaks their ankle, that, we look at that under the analysis. But, um, I don't think you're really exposing the village to any unnecessary liability by taking on that cost or that responsibility for the sidewalk repairs.
I'm gonna answer your question, Kent.
Well, committee.
Committee had it.
Was, too, it was me.
I can reply with, in an email too, with that, that's just kind of my, my thoughts on it.
Thank you for looking into that.
The only thing that caught my ear was major negligence. Did you wait four years to fix the problem? Is that major negligence? And I'll just use the sidewalk on the other street. You wait four years for those. They're horrible now.
I mean, like, so there's a whole analysis too, the three-tiered analysis and based on case law, so it's really a, obviously, case by case situation, but.
So if you, let's just say we had something like that where we didn't have the money upfront for startup to get all the sidewalks repaired at once.
Sure.
And, uh, I did a little bit of research. You see a lot of things people say you're able just to paint them bright yellow and pretty much cover your butt until you can get it repaired.
Right, yeah, I mean, you want to take necessary precautions. I mean, obviously, that's not a, a fix.
Right, no, no, but we'll say, you know, like, we start the first year and we don't have enough money to do them all and we don't have, we only budgeted so much for it and we'll base that off of what we're gonna be collecting and that we have to wait till the next year, but it's not like we're waiting four or five years to do it.
Yeah, no.
We like to get them all done as soon as possible, I mean.
Yeah, no, I.
It's straight through your money.
I think the village would be in that situation.
Well, even, I mean, anytime there's a lawsuit in a, in a community, I mean, they always, you lawyers go for deep pockets. So you're gonna drag everybody into it. They won't stay in it, but you're gonna drag.
It would be needful.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, that's just how it is.
No, you're, you're not wrong.
But if a sidewalk overtimes, somebody drives over and busts it up pretty bad, I mean, that's something that if it's doing quadrants or whatever, he's gonna have to go address that issue if it's a major repair. You may be not scheduled to be in that area a year or two from now, but then it gets messed up pretty, for some reason. I think you'd have to address it quicker.
Well, yeah, then that wouldn't be any problem.
If you had a report from somebody concerned resident that there's a bad area and it's not in the cycle, you'd have to address it. I mean, it's sooner than later before.
When they're getting a section ready to pour, well, just get that one ready and knock it out.
Yep, makes sense, so. The last time, when, I don't remember where Ken video was anymore, street, nah, it wasn't that one. Water suit refuges, when we was talking about sidewalk repairs, we were waiting on bad response and we're waiting on the possible refuse rate change. We got that answer too, so.
Okay, moving forward, um, Department had time. Chief Denny?
Well, you probably don't have the calls for service of cases for the month, because I mailed that to Cheryl this morning. So you probably don't have that and I can't tell you the numbers, so. So, the one thing I've got is, uh, one of my part-time officers resigned as of today, long time officer here, Zachary Miller. He's just ran out of time, that he's not gonna be able to contribute, you know, kids, side business, teaching. You know, he said, I just can't, can't do it, so. So he's resigned as a part-time officer, so. I think, other than that, um, we received a complaint this morning about the parking on East Quinella. Right?
Yep.
We've had two accidents there. Car is backing out and striking another car. Lady that, uh, we had in mayor's court this morning was complaining about, you know, the parking in that situation.
Let's look at it.
Yeah, that's been brought up for years, but I think in this case, if neighbors would cooperate, you wouldn't have that happen.
Right. And I think that was kind of the scenario, because of how she explained that to us, said she had asked and they just.
They said, since it's happened, they've kind of moved down the way a little bit, but it's an area where their driveway actually comes right back out into a parking area, you know. If they were to move their car up a little bit more, it would definitely.
They'll make them all put driveways in, good parking out there along the street, hanging out on the street.
They will get driveways.
Huh?
They will get driveways.
We've addressed the issue about parking in the street on that, on kind of there right there, and those issues went back and in pulling in. Some of them are shared driveways and some are, um, just hard to turn.
Chief, do you have one position open or full-time, is that correct?
Yes.
Do you know, is it out there? Do you have any applicants or are you still waiting?
I'm still waiting advertised, with Cheryl being gone today, um, I was gonna have her run the ad.
Yeah, I was just curious if you had heard anything.
So I can figure out a date when we're gonna end it by, so.
The officer that did leave here, the full-timer did, but he, did he say he would work part-time?
Yeah, he's staying on his part-time, so now I've only got three part-time.
With, with that parking in there, if that's some of the streetlight property wants to readdress, I mean, I, you know.
This is the fourth time, it'll be like fifteen years.
It's just hard, to work with the neighbors and talk to them about positioning their cars in the street, so. Anything else, Chief?
No, that's it.
Any big question for Chief? All right, thanks, Chief. Fire Chief?
At this time, I don't have any thing from the fireside for this show.
I do have a quick question about, is there any fire burn training going on for your staff?
Uh, as far as fire burn training, that is, that is something that I kind of mentioned to Cheryl as far as that. That was additional from the class that the new candidates just went through. It's like $300 a person for the training and it's by appointment and schedule. There's several locations that hold this training. It's kind of like, there's several scenarios. There's flashover training, there's in-house training just to get the candidates, I guess, used to going into a house to kind of feel what fire behavior is and to feel, you know, inner gear, how to maneuver through it, that sort of thing. That is a call, so with 11 candidates, you know, multiple thousand dollars, uh, as far as that goes. I guess six, three, three times 11, not sure the numbers that quick, but it's a few thousand dollars to put these guys through additional. It's not part of the program that they went through, so the 36-hour class that these guys just went through, it's not part of it. It's additional for these guys to enhance their training. Then the next step is, uh, what you would call transitional firefighter, that transition them into learning more, doing more. But that part comes with the burn part of the program and with the packet. So like Fire One Transitional, that comes with the, uh, with the packet, but the 36-hour class doesn't come with that. That's like the awareness level of firefighting that you bump up and bump up, and then those classes are already incorporated into the program. So I do, I did mention to Cheryl as far as, um, the cost of it and I would give her dates of, um, how many participants actually wanted to go through it. Because it wasn't clear to me that all 11 wanted to do it, but I needed to get numbers before I came to her and say, hey, this is how much it's gonna be to put these guys through this class, um, so they can have more underneath their belt to do more. so they can have more underneath their belt to do more on the fire ground, if that makes sense. So, yes, I brought it up to Cheryl, too, I have checked into a couple of the classes and when they're gonna be, but until I get the numbers from the participants who actually wants to be involved in that, then I have not scheduled anything as far as that goes.
Is that open to existing squad members as well, then?
If you're a fire certified, if you're fire certified, at least a Level One certification, you already went through that. The only thing that's required is a 36-hour. So if you're a 36-hour firefighter, which is the awareness level, then it would be only beneficial to them, because if you're Fire One, you've already went through it. And of course, if you're Fire Two, of course, you've already went through it and you've had more of the training to go with that. So, with the lot of that we have, I have not got enough of who all wants to, you know, go through that. So, that's the last thing.
Somewhere I read, it would be an email you sent or something, where the guys had all passed and they were gonna test, have they tested yet?
Out of out of 11, nine, nine successfully passed the first time, the other two are going back to retest, so they can become certified. But there was nine out of 11 first time successful.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah, so there's two that still have to go back and test.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Total for the year billing is 208, 298, 50, income is 49, 557, we've had $42,846 in adjustments, thank you Medicare. Last month, we had 59 calls, so far this month, we've had 10 calls. As of last month, we were granted $5,500 on the grant, the other grant, the hardship grant, we did not get. Next Monday, we have seven new EMTs heading to class, and then Tuesday, we have three advanced heading to class. And I would like to present Devin Johnson for part-time status, he comes, he's already certified, he comes to us from Williams County, and he's also an Edgerton firefighter. So he understands that weekends are the main thing, so.
He's good, he's good with running weekends?
Yep, sure is.
Super.
You said Devin Johnson?
Devin Johnson, D-E-B-I-N Johnson, Combs Town.
Well, I will make the recommendation for to hire Devin Johnson as a part-timer for weekends, right, visual, weekends only?
Yeah, well, yeah, we, it's mainly weekends. I support the mayor's nomination.
I'll second it.
Ooh, pick one. Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Assett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Angley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And last but not least, 511 is in service as of 4 o'clock today, so we now have two fully functioning squads back in Hicksville.
You have enough people, we could put two of them on the road at the same time?
I have two fully functioning squads. That, that, that's why, that's why we have so many EMTs and, you know, going to, going to class, but, you know, just like yesterday, yesterday we had a call where they were out and they were already going or on their way to the hospital, and two more came in at the same time, and we had to assure what day and hour coming. So, you know, we appreciate everything that the surrounding communities have done for us. I will say that this week, and I will tell PFP more on this later, I'm having two meetings this week, and that's all I'm gonna say. But I will advise PFP next week on these things, so. That said, that's all I got.
Thank you. Is the, is the truck someplace where we can see it?
Yes, right next door.
I mean, is...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's sitting right up front, it, it...
So you can pull it out?
Yeah, yeah, we can pull it out, we can, yeah, yeah, we, yeah, I mean, with it being in service, we can actually drive it now.
Well, I didn't know if you had it parked parked behind the redwood or what, you know?
No, no, when we, when we put it into, when we put it into service today at 4 o'clock, I made it the primary, because I want to get, and I am gonna tell you, 510 has been, 510 has been a great, a great squad, I just, I want to get it out to Schmitz, it's been wanting to start a little hard, and, you know, I just need to see if there's anything going on, you know. One, one thing that I've always said with you guys, we need to maintain these trucks.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, I'd much rather err and not have there be anything than wait and there be a $20,000 bill, so. And I was told today that the old 511 is out there on the other side, so.
I'm gonna ask if that guy, it is on the market.
Pull it maybe out so we can look at it once he leaves here.
Can do.
Get pictures of it, you know?
Yeah, anytime, I mean, I'll get, I'll give you a ride.
I'll probably get one soon enough anyhow.
And real quick, speaking with the fire and EMS department, you know, we talked about the generator, getting a grant possibly with that, but then we had the gas company come in and say they might need to run more gas, while they had somebody else look at it, and they said, no, you don't have, this is good news, you don't have to run another gas line, they can upsize the meter and take care of the the larger generator, and they're willing to do that for free, so. They had offered that service and upsized the meter and provide that service, so, and I told Mommy Valley who's working on the grants, that we didn't have that additional money added to it, so, basically, it was off of Darren, Darren Brown's projected quote, so, good news on that, but thank you, everybody, for your reports. Next we have fiscal officer, you, you ready to handle that, you wanna go through any numbers? You weren't ready for that, were ya?
No.
We'll let you off there.
I was like, I was just hoping for that.
We see the reports, the financial reports in the packet, and Cheryl will be back tomorrow, hopefully, and if you have any questions and concerns about that, you can get with her. We have the utility departments, fee schedules, reconciliation reports, they had a good month, and I know the receipts for the income was up 22%, showing a net loss so far, minus five, so. Kim did say we had a good, good month this month, so. Couple things on my thing, I went to a cannabis seminar, Senator Rob McCully was there, and an attorney, I can't pronounce her name, with record grade, and talked about what's happening currently within the cannabis realm of retail, she basically said that the people that got it early were already the established vendors, things of that nature, it is very expensive to get a license, she said, the people that were pre-established had first dibs on it. It was an informative meeting, it was a bunch of mayors getting together in Pemberville, Ohio, it was a nice town. Last week, I attended a housing meeting with Erica from the economic development down in Lima, every, what I've gone to is everybody's lack of housing, the state's trying to find innovative ways to help with grants, different programs, people are getting inventive with rental houses, plight areas to renovate them, but we were in Lima, and Lima's a much bigger town than Little Hicksville, so, most of their presenters were from Lima and they're, what they have to deal with, but they were at a 60% rental rate, they had a large manufactured lot on business years ago, which really took an impact on their community, but they were thinking of innovative ways to bring housing, and we all are. Speaking of that, we actually had a builder reach out to us here recently and ask for a tour of Hicksville, so after that meeting, we met with them, kind of showed them around town with some different building opportunities, showed them the bar, of course, and some other places. I told you I was gonna reach out to some area landowners that were adjacent to the village borders, that if they were, if anybody was interested in putting a smaller housing development or adding onto a street that was already there and could tie into the infrastructure without a lot of costs involved in infrastructure, that they would be willing to talk to them. So, we kind of showed them around, it was a nice visit with everybody, and they were looking at some numbers, and I got with Cory, and they wanted some infrastructure ideas on the community, so Cory provided those to them. I want to thank the beautification committee, the flowers around town are just beautiful, they, they work very hard of watering them through the drier times, and the people volunteered their time in, in getting those looking nice for our community in different areas, and also the farmers' market committee, that's all part of the beautification, but the farmers' market, crafters you see down there on the corner of Main and Smith Street, twice a week, at the social event, they provide a lot of goods and services, products and stuff, so it's nice to see them down there. And that's all I had, so, anybody have any questions for me? Oh, the Verizon down there asked Rachel.
I have reached out to Mark a couple of times.
I need to call Mark tomorrow.
Not, I tried, I didn't, I'm not.
Something we need to get finalized, I, when I'm speaking with Eric, you know, and Brian, he's not building a building recently, but if he does find somebody that wants to build a spec building, he's willing to jump on it quickly, so we need, definitely need to get that road moved, the fiber, go with the Verizon contractor, American dot org, so we worked on that a long time, so we want to get that kind of completed here at a timing header, so.
Yeah, you have a lot of work to do, so.
Okay, I'll give Mark a call, so, that's all I had, but...
Can I have 30 seconds?
No.
Well, I was waiting for you to... Just for Rob and Tony, you want to get together and meet about East Corneille here, or just make it a neighbor cooperation? I said, it's been brought up to council four years, four times.
We, it, that's already gone to committee once, I mean, I don't know...
If the committee doesn't want to meet, then...
They were measuring roads at one point in time, and if we start shutting down parking on that road, there's a lot of roads in the town, just by that measurement alone, that would have to be shut down. I don't, I mean, when we start messing with people's parking, the village gets really upset.
Well, if you don't want to meet, that's, I guess, if we did, I'd get the time set up, all over here. That's probably the worst block, or block and a half in this town, for people parking along the street. Well, that's fine, I'd, but I'd ask people...
I mean, I don't care, you wouldn't have a meeting, absolutely, I, I mean...
This gets the same...
I lived there for nine months, I didn't realize it was that big a deal.
It's only two spots, and if people would cooperate, there would not be a problem.
2007 is normal.
Where's the issue at, Ken, where was the accident at?
Al Gore's hospital.
Main?
No, 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 no. It's the other way, it's the other way.
The battered, old batter shell house on the corner.
Okay.
In Compton, they parked right behind her driveway, they've had three wrecks backing out of her driveway, if they just move...
Move up a little bit.
And that's just, that's a neighbor issue, to me, that's not a parking, it's not... Common sense. So, no, I'm fine not meeting, but if you're...
We'll set it up.
I agree.
Anything else before the council?
Fine job, young lady.
Roll call, Rachel, thank you so much.
Yes.
Assett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Angley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.